On the meeting to order, I'd like to welcome to the March 22nd, 2022, regularly scheduled council meeting in the Littlerd Law office chambers. Please stand for pledge of allegiance. The Lord is our Father, and Son, and God is our God. Serving our country.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For, O'er Heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we do not attempt to do so, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the glory, for ever and ever.
Thank you. May be seated. The court please call a roll. Kelly Gangel here. Pat Mobus. Excuse. Beth Gilman here. Roseanne Hickman. Richard Morgan.
Here.
Margaret Phillips here.
Jerry Torelli.
Excuse. Thank you. Counsel, if you're free to just receive the March 8th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam President, I move to approve the March 8th minutes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll start then.
Thank you. Your motion by Ms. Phillips, second by Mrs. Hickman, to approve the March 8th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. The Chair notes that certification has been made regarding compliance with the rules and notifications of this meeting. We have no guest presentation, no public comments. We move on to executive officer reports. Counsel, this evening there are two new ordinances and a new resolution. Ordinance 7-22 will be assigned to Safety Services Committee, and the administration has asked that it be passed on its second reading of Council's vote chooses. Ordinance 8-22 will also be assigned to Safety Services Committee, and the administration has also asked that that be passed on its second reading. There's a new resolution, 22-3. That will not be assigned to a committee, but they've also asked that that be passed on the second reading if possible. We have the Easter egg hunt on April 2nd. Sorry, I probably took that out of here. If you'd like to donate anything, they take a monetary donation still, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And then also, just want to remind the committees, if you're having trouble getting your parties together to meet in person, you can do a Zoom meeting with House Bill 51 passing at this time, but you would need to get with Mrs. Ostheimer to make sure to make the arrangements so that it's all set up and everything like that. So, oh, and happy birthday, related birthday to Mrs. Phillips.
Thank you.
And that is all I have. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Morgan, you can start the clock, but I don't think it'll be 48 minutes this time.
I will never live that down.
It's okay. It's all good. It's all good. As President of Council noted, that Resolution 22-3 is in front of you this evening. That's a resolution in support of Ukraine and their fight for democracy. We all know the story and all that fun stuff. As I mentioned at the State of the City, I'll be more than happy to sign that once you take the action to approve that. It's probably something that will mean nothing in the bigger scheme, but it means a whole heck of a lot in a much larger scope of conversation. In front of you, you'll see the Board of Health annual report. I'd ask that you add that to correspondence this evening. Last week, I attended their annual meeting. There were representatives from nearly every township, nearly every village, of course the city. County commissioners were represented. Those are the bodies that make up the Board of Health here in Ottawa County. Jerry Bingham, the Executive Director of the Board of Health, will be here at the second meeting in April to give an update on pandemic to endemic. I had a conversation with a few of his folks in their office the other day about this whole conversation as it's developing in our communities, and I think it's going to be very, very informative. Again, that will be the 26th of April. Learned earlier today that the police chief had applied for and received a grant for body cameras. Eighteen body cameras will be coming to the police department. There are currently two in use. There are two sergeants that have been kind of using them as a trial. There are different ways of setting them up, meaning they can be on all the time, they can be on voice activated, they can be on with a push of a button, they can be on when there's a proximity, meaning she's out on a call, I come within somebody feet of her, mine automatically kicks on. So that's something that's very cool, and I commend Chief Scott for taking initiative to get that going. Mrs. Ostheimer, Mr. Bealow, several folks from the Great Lakes Community Action Partnership, formerly WSOS, had a meeting. Was that earlier this week or last week?
Yesterday.
Sheen. Feels like that was a week and a half ago. Regarding the CHIP program, Community Housing Improvement Program, it's something that the city has participated in forever. They have reorganized how the calendar year operates, and because of that, I'll be signing some papers saying that, yes, we're interested. Shoot those off to GLCAP. They get information back to us. Counsel, if you're so inclined to continue that program, you'll need to pass a resolution, but because of the change in timing on their part, we may only have one meeting to take that action. And Mrs. Ostheimer will keep us posted as that paperwork comes in. Again, it's been ongoing for quite some time. Dealing with the art garage, as you may know, the Village of O'Carver and the City of Port Clinton have been in collaboration to work on state capital budget dollars for both the art garage here in Port Clinton and a riverfront walkway and amphitheater in O'Carver. That paperwork has been submitted. The deadline was last Friday. I can't say enough about Mayor Babcock from the Village of O'Carver, and he basically led me through the whole process because it was very intense and very long and very educational. We have also begun the process to reach out, and we had a conversation, Mayor Babcock and I had a conversation with representatives from U.S. Senator Brown's office with regards to earmark funding and the next round of earmarks. It gets a little difficult on the House side of things because right now, Port Clinton is in one House district and O'Carver is in another House district. We're talking with some folks, the best way to approach that, to get both the House and the Senate side on our side for this major project in the arts in our community. As we've mentioned, the Easter egg hunt is going to be on the 2nd of April at 10:00 a.m. at City Hall. The Easter Bunny is in need of some assistance. If you're available at 8:00 a.m. to meet at the Pavilion at City Park, should be about two and a half hours or so. The Easter egg hunt itself again is at 10:00, but if you get there at 8:00 to help the Easter Bunny put the eggs out and set up the parameters for the different age groups and so forth. Two definite signs of spring. If you didn't notice, the street sweeper is out and about, so that's a good thing. They started doing their business yesterday. And the second true sign of spring, brush pickup will begin on April 11th. It'll start at the West End and work its way east on a weekly basis, or biweekly basis, I should say.
No, monthly.
Monthly, thank you. That's why she's here. On a monthly basis. Again, April 11th is the start of the brush pickup. April 16th, the Port Clinton Fullbackers Club is having their annual wild game feed and auction to support the football program. Forty dollars per ticket or a table of eight for $350. I'm trying to put together a table of eight, so if anyone in this room is so inclined to participate, that's why there's two, myself and a township trustee from Portage Township. Again, that's the 16th of April. Just let me know and we'll go from there. Since the State of the City address, quite a few things have happened. Dina, Tracy and I met and talked about the different bullet items. She's working very hard on some legal aspects of what we've talked about. Tracy and I are meeting with folks, are setting up meetings with folks to try to get the ball rolling on things, and once we have specific information, we'll then take them to the individual council committees as defined in that State of the City address. And just a quick update, we've talked about it quite a bit, the Mile of Dollars campaign. Again, onemileofdollars.com to make your donation to the 4th of July. At the moment, we stand at $840 donated, which equates to 420 feet, which means we only have 4,860 feet to go to reach our goal by May 1st. So with that, Madam President, unless anyone has any questions, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Any counsel have questions?
Yeah. Mayor, where is that Health Department report at?
You can send it via email.
Oh, yeah, okay. I thought he said it was here.
He did say it, but it's not.
Okay.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
And it's already added under.
It's under court clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Auditor report.
Thank you, Madam President. Counsel, physically in front of you is a memo from me. Order 622, the appropriations ordinance and request for amendment that Ms. Gilman, I believe, is prepared to make during her floor time. What I did was marked up and read the amendment, or the memo I sent earlier when the appropriations ordinance, ordinance number six was first introduced, and then what those changes looked like, either in brackets or in brackets. Just to accommodate a couple of things, anticipated inflation not going away impacting oil and gas prices at the city municipal base, increased utility costs, most meaning electric, when our electric aggregation contract comes due later this year, and we're in the process of renegotiating that, or finding a new electric supplier, but the cost will go up. An anticipated retirement over at the sewer department, and some other things that that's why there's a request to amend that ordinance before passing it tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question. I read this, and I'm not sure how to write what an appropriation is and is not. All these red numbers, it doesn't mean we have more money, we're going to spend more money. Tell me if I have this right, but due to various things that are happening, you think, for instance, police department rather than need 2.65, we need 2.70. And you're saying that it might be that much. We don't necessarily have more money, but you're looking at what it could be. Is that correct?
Correct, but there's no appropriation there that is above what we are anticipating to be able to have to spend throughout the year, by year end.
Is this normal to do this? I mean, it seems like a good idea. I mean, like, we have, do we get one of these every month, every year?
No, so this is for the full year. In December, council passed just the first quarter, three-month temporary budget while we worked this out and got some information from the county and figured out our anticipated revenue. So when this went before you, I think the second, it was the second meeting in February, no, I don't think typically we amended, or when I was on council, that it had been amended because more people had their stuff together because they were, had been in this office for quite a while. So since then, there have just been some changes that we'll have funds should be available. We thought it'd be smart to increase the available limit, the limit that council sets, so that's what the appropriation is, available by the authority to enter into contracts or to spend the dollars because of inflation and those other things that I mentioned.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense.
And the city has to place a full budget by April 1st. They can do a temporary budget for the first, pretty much.
So we do a temporary one, then he does the real work and we do it.
Correct.
Okay, I can do that. That works.
And then typically, the last meeting of December, there's some year-end adjustments to accommodate a couple, a variety of things.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks.
Sure. Anyone else have questions for Mr. Bealow? Okay. The treasurer's not here, but some type of bed tax, some of your doc tax. As of yesterday, bed tax for the year-to-date is $17,923.94, and doc tax year-to-date is $5,500. Thank you. Law Director's report.
Thank you, Madam President. There are two new ordinances that were brought up. I just wanted to just quickly talk about the airgun amendment. So we, the Port Clinton Police Department, are having some trouble because there's a new tic-tac phrase with these splatter guns. What they are is they're, it's like, it's an airgun. It's under the definition of an airgun, and it has water beads, and the way that they come out of the gun is at a very high speed, high rate, and what they do is when they hit a target, they splatter, they splat. So there's really no evidence per se that you got hit, other than if you have like a mark or if there's damage to property or something. And the problem is, you know, you could go buy one of these at, you know, Walmart, Target, wherever. They're about between like $80 and $90. The problem is, is the kids who are purchasing them are driving around in cars and shooting them at people walking, shooting them at property. They've been shooting younger kids as younger kids were walking home from school.
They're not, they're not paint, they shoot water, you say?
They shoot water, but they're beads.
Right.
And the beads, even though they're water beads, at the speed that they come out, the rate, it's harp.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's, no, it's fine. And so there was an incident, I guess, over by Bassett's where they confronted a gentleman and shot him with those splatter ball guns, and he got upset and then he got beat up. So there's, it's escalating what these kids are doing. Some of them are chasing, like, they'll get two cars and they'll chase each other on the streets, shooting these guns at each other. We heard that some of these guns are being painted black to make them look more like real guns as opposed to toy guns. So the police had a concern because they've tried, you know, telling the kids to, you know, do this in their yards. They even suggested going over to Waterworks Park just to get out of the way of the streets. But then at Waterworks Park, they were standing on city equipment and shooting stuff over by a new project, so that didn't work out very well. It's just becoming a problem, and the concern that the police department had was we don't really have anything to charge these kids with. There were other cities, I did some research, and there are other cities that are having the same problems, and it's all coming up so fast. So you have, like, Bowling Green, which is not too far, Westlake, La Range, those are three cities that had these incidents happen, and in those incidents, people, there were injuries to people because if this thing hits you in the face or, you know, unexposed or exposed skin, I guess, it's going to leave a well type of a mark, and that's how close you are. So these other cities have been charging or discussing charging kids with discharging a firearm, which is, you're kind of like, wow, that's really serious for a splatter ball gun. So we did, in this ordinance, after speaking with the police department, we did kind of a hybrid of what we had. So in our current ordinances, we have discharging firearms, and we have throwing or shooting missiles. That's all we have. And so if a police officer would see these kids, you know, out and about, if they're walking down the street, or if they see them shooting these splat balls, or if they're chasing each other in cars, things like that, you know, they can charge them with this. And the big, the big difference what we have now, so discharging guns, it says flat, you cannot have them in the city. You cannot discharge a gun in the city. And it says, you know, gun, rifle, shotgun, revolver, pistol, or other firearm. And then with the missiles, it's kind of like if you're doing target practice with like bows and arrows, or, you know, if you're throwing something, you know, that's, you can't do it on private property, but you can't do it on public property. So we did a hybrid of the two, and so basically, we have the definition of what an airgun is, definition of the ammunition, and then we have no person shall discharge an airgun in or onto any public place, in or on the property of another, or from any private property into or onto any public place or the property of another. So basically, if you're in your yard, if you're playing with your friends, if you're doing, you know, target practice, you're fine. If you're out in the streets, or if you're shooting from your house at the neighbor's house and hitting their house, you're not fine. If you're shooting cars, you know, they're in the street, you're not fine, any car really. So basically, this is going to be something for the police department. If they see this, they have something to cite with. And then here, we also have another section that says, no parent, guardian, or custodian of any person under the age of 18 shall knowingly permit any such person under the age of 18 to discharge an airgun in the same places. So this also will hold the parents liable, or more so, just give them a heads up that, hey, this is serious. And then there's the third section, which basically states that if a police officer sees this, that he could also confiscate the airgun and the ammunition. It's a misdemeanor of the fourth degree, so if somebody with a misdemeanor of the fourth degree is a juvenile, goes to juvenile court, and it's their first time, they're usually put on diversion. It's a three-month program on average where they do some community service, they do, you know, to be of good behavior, they'll do like some kinds of project, a poster, or like some kind of essay to explain why their behavior was inappropriate, and then if they're done with that, it gets sealed and they never have to worry about it again. If they have previous run-ins with juvenile court and they can't do the diversion program, they would, you know, probably be put on probation, you know, have to do community service, things like that, but that's also something that would be for about a six-month period, definitely less than a year. And that is also something that would be sealed as well, they could request to be sealed. So this isn't something permanent. The biggest concern of the police department is they do not want to see this escalate. They don't want to see, for example, juveniles chasing each others in cars and then hitting a third car, and something happens to the driver of the third car, or, you know, seriously hurting someone with one of these, or doing serious damage to property. So they're trying to just kind of get a handle on this, as it looks like other municipalities are doing the same thing. And so that's, that's kind of where we are with that. We don't know if it will be effective or not. We're hoping it will just give them another tool in their toolbox to use if they do come across this. For example, if somebody gets injured, they can charge it assault, you know, if it's offensive, if it causes annoyance and inconvenience or alarm, they can charge it with disorderly conduct, or if they're chasing each other in a car, they can charge something else. This just gives them an extra tool if, you know, nobody is directly assaulted, or, you know, the other things that they just see it happening, because they want to make sure that the kids in our community are safe. So that's, that's what we came up with. And that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay, one question. How many actual calls have the police department gotten for events with kids here in Port Clinton?
A lot.
It's daily.
And.
Multiple times a day.
Yeah, a lot. And Second Ship usually is dealing with those calls, and I spoke with a couple officers from Second Ship, and it's all the time, and it's the same kids. So it's a lot of the same kids that they're dealing with. You know, they say stop, and, okay, okay, no, they don't stop. So it's getting to a point where, you know, they don't, they don't care. They know that there's really no recourse and they don't, they don't care. So they're constantly, you know, and even the police department's really, you know, trying to be creative, like saying, hey, why don't you go here, why don't you go here? They suggested going to the parks and the health police. They suggested going to Waterworks Parks and the health police. So clearly, you know, there's really nowhere they can go except on their own property, but it's, it's a lot. At the time, there were also concerns that kids, younger kids were walking home from school, and then older kids were driving by and shooting out their windows, their cars at the younger kids. So there was also that concern as well, but it's, it became a big problem very quickly.
And with the adults, if the parents or guardians, what is the penalty if they get the misdemeanor?
It's, it's not a, not a legal offense, so they would have to go to court, and it's a.
Hundred dollar fine?
One fifty.
One fifty?
Hundred and fifty dollar fine and up to 30 days of jail. But most of the time, you know, if it's a first offense, they would not impose the jail time. They would say, you know, hey, we'll just make you pay the fine, and as long as you are lawful for the next year, you know, you don't have to serve any jail time.
And that would go through municipal court, not through juvenile court?
Okay, so this doesn't take away, like you said, as of now, before this is passed, if two people are walking down Madison Street and they're shooting each other with this, even though it's annoying to us, at this point, unless they're hitting someone or breaking something, there's, they're not really breaking any laws or?
Well, they, they are, I mean, technically, because if you look under the definition of the firearm, airgun was in there. Now, I don't think when this was written, they meant an airgun such as a splatter gun, but it does fit under the definition, so, you know.
If it does, why do we have to make it special?
Because this says you cannot have it in the city limits at all.
Okay, all right.
You cannot discharge it anywhere in the city limits. So, you know, we don't want to ban these splatter guns, clearly. We just want to limit their use.
And I'm not really questioning it, but I am, because as it was written, it was considered, it was considered, it was considered a firearm.
Right.
Okay, and so how does this give the police any more leeway to stop it now than it did before? Because before it was considered a firearm, and firearms you can't discharge in the city.
Right.
Is it because they just, they didn't think arresting a kid for a splatter gun was not the same as arresting a kid for another rifle? They wanted to differentiate?
Yes. They wanted to differentiate the airgun from a rifle, a shotgun, a revolver, or any other firearm.
But the penalty's the same, right? A fourth degree misdemeanor? Did I read that right?
It is.
Okay. I'm just not, I'm not sure why, what this is giving the police that they didn't have before. I don't quite understand.
I think it's just the, it's new, well, let's start with it's new. Every time something is new, you know, you have to take what you have from the revised code and make it fit to what the situation is. So, so for example, just to give you a completely different example, kids all of a sudden started sexting each other in schools. And there really was no good definition in the revised code as to what to charge these kids with. So when kids initially were getting charged, they were getting charged with third degree felonies for texting their boyfriend or girlfriend. You know, parents were, you know, outraged, and the court didn't really know how to deal with that per se as a felony, because felonies and misdemeanors have different, different types of requirements, and it's a sex offense, so you have to register as a sex offender. Clearly not the intention of you texting your boyfriend or girlfriend. So over the years, that has evolved, and they are, I think it's whether it's distributing matter harmful to a juvenile, which is a misdemeanor of the first degree, and it's not a sex offense. So it went from we had to take what we had and make it work to hear something much more reasonable, and it fits better than what it was. So I think a lot of the police officers are hesitant with charging, discharging a firearm, given that.
Even what happened is the same, it sounds worse.
Right.
And probably a lawyer could fight that. It was just a toy.
Exactly. So it's one of those things where they are having a hard time trying to make it fit, and they don't want to go over the top where we, by changing the ordinance a little bit, we can, we can make it a little more reasonable. There is no state law that, you know, distinguishes these airguns, so it's just a city ordinance. A lot of other cities have already had these in place, so we're, I don't know, we just never distinguish them, but I guess it gives just a little bit of a distinction, and it makes it a little more reasonable.
Yeah, it's hard to arrest a 14-year-old kid for a firearm when it's a toy, but now you can, I don't know if arrest is the right word, but it's better defined. That makes sense.
Yeah, it just defines it a little better, gives them a little more leeway, and it gives also the, we're not saying you can't use them, we're just saying you can't use them on public property.
Yeah, the firearm is you can't.
Right.
Because that's, I mean.
Oh, okay, yeah, so there's another reason to separate it out.
Correct.
I can shoot one of these in my backyard, but I can't shoot a rifle.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, that all makes sense.
Right. And, you know, I mean, a parent, if you're with a parent, you know, you can shoot, you can shoot this in your backyard, you can shoot it wherever, you know, if you go to like a range or something, or do things like that. So it takes you outside of just, you know, just your backyard, you can't take it to other places. It just cannot be like in a public place on the street.
Okay, thank you.
Or park, if that makes sense.
No, it all makes sense now, thank you. Sorry.
I don't know if I'd call them a toy.
No, but I can see, I understand that, but, but I can see how it could be argued that, and separating it out, and like you said. and separating it out, and like you said, if you kept it in, that means in theory, you'd get arrested for shooting in your own backyard, so it all
Right, and it says here, you can shoot it in your backyard, and that's why we took the hybrid.
That's just separated, yes, okay.
Between the missiles, because there was really no, in the missiles, there was really nothing that said like air gun. It was just kind of goofy. And Miss Hickman is right. I watched a couple YouTube videos that were made, and they had a, like one, for example, had a father and a son, and they were in their backyard and they set up battles along the fence. And the father was shooting the, like an air gun with BBs in it, with metal BBs, and the son was using the splatter gun with the water beads. And when they were shooting at the exact same time, the exact same location, the splatter gun took out more battles than the BBs. So it, you know, it's not necessarily the water bead, it's just, or necessarily the gun, I guess, it's just the high speed that it comes out.
Oh, I can understand that.
That's going to cause, that's going to, you know, hurt.
It's the velocity, okay.
It's not a velocity one, not a gun.
And I can say the kids are all playing with them, they have them, and I was coming down Sixth Street about twenty-five miles an hour, no stop signs for several blocks, and a girl ran right in front of me. And of course, I know these kids, so I'm the mom, yells at them. I'm looking at her to say something to her, and I'm paying attention to her, another girl runs in front of me, who was the one shooting her. Had I not stopped, I probably would have hit her. And of course, I yelled at the kids, and I talked to their moms, I know them, they're having fun, they're playing, they're not paying attention, you know, they're playing together, they ran right across Sixth Street. So it has escalated pretty quickly, how you handle it, I mean, this is interesting to look at.
I mean, when I read this, I was thinking BB guns, because that's what we used to shoot each other with.
Yeah, and the parents, you know, her mom and dad were at work, so what the parents, how they plan to it, it's
Okay, I'm good for that.
Yeah, and the parents, from the little information I received from the police department, are not taking it as well. You know, they're, exactly, their comments are, well, my kids are just having fun, who cares?
Until you hit one with a car, right, in front of you.
Right, or
I mean, I almost hit a little girl that I know.
Right, or if there's an accident, or if they shoot somebody and it, you know, gets, you know, hits them in the face or in the eye, then it's going to be much more serious.
They're going to start shooting us.
Rifles or are they handguns?
The ones I saw walking down Prairie Street, well, the guns weren't, they were rifle-looking.
Yeah.
I had to do a double take and look at the
And some of them are taking those off.
Here are some images.
So they're taking them off, and they're making them more, more serious.
Which can be a very, very dangerous situation when they do that.
So have we had, have we had a diminution of paintball guns, and this has replaced it, or?
Yeah, paintball guns are not seen anymore, I guess.
Well, and that's why, you know, is this something that's going to go downhill as quick as it came up, I mean?
It might, it might, and that's why I said they may never use this, it may never really be something that's used, but it just gives them that little bit of extra, you know, something that they can cite with that can hopefully curb the problem. Hopefully, we'll see, it'll be more of a, see if it works out of the thing.
Interesting. Miss Hickman, did you have a question, or was it, oh, that's it, okay. Any further questions? No, okay, thank you. Um, we move on to committee reports. Um, Mr. Bealman, would you like to report on finance?
Um, the finance committee meeting was canceled tonight because members were absent. I don't know when the next meeting will be scheduled, but I'm sure Pat will make an announcement.
Okay, thank you. Um, Environment and Public Works, Mrs. Hickman.
I still need to turn in my minutes, and I will do that soon, this week.
Thank you. Safety Services, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two meetings coming up. The first one will be this Friday, the twenty-fifth, at four P M. here, and the second one will be on April twenty-sixth at five thirty, going over these ordinances that we have here, which she's going to assign to our committee when she reads them, right?
Well, I already did assign it.
Okay, there we are.
During my report.
I think that's it. We're working on stuff, but we have, we're trying to do a lot of cleanup, catch-up, pick-up stuff here. We'll get to it, it just takes a while. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Economic and Community Development?
We have our meeting, I mean, after council tonight, and President, and do I want to do this, or do that, the ordinance?
When I read, when I call.
Just asking. Nothing else, Madam President?
Thank you. Um, under Correspondence, we have the Planning Commission Minutes for January twenty-seventh, twenty-two, the Ottawa County Health Department, two thousand twenty-one annual reports, the State of Ohio Division of Liquor Control objections to renewal of a liquor permit letter dated March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Ms. Counsel, would you take any action as to the correspondence this evening?
We have a question first, Madam President. Renewal of a liquor permit, what's the difference between them, when we okay a regular liquor license for a building? Is this something, just a catch-up?
They're, but they do have to renew them every so many years.
All of the individual ones that we did?
Any license has to be renewed.
Repeated each year.
You know, some, I don't know if it's each year, or three, five, I don't know. But you have the preliminary, which is, you know, a new one, then a renewal.
So we should
And that was in the letter, that did explain that in the letter.
I read most of that, and I got to the bottom, and I thought, I'll just ask some questions. Madam President, I move these, the correspondence to be accepted.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hickman. I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Hickman, to approve the correspondence as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same side. Thank you, motion carries, correspondence are approved. We will now move on to ordinances and resolutions. Under third readings, we have ordinance six dash twenty-two. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance six dash twenty-two?
Madam President, I move to amend ordinance six dash twenty-two.
Oh, please, right. Could the clerk please read by title and summary only?
I was, she's the president. I'm just doing what she's saying.
Could the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance six dash twenty-two?
Ordinance six dash twenty-two, and ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Portland, County of Ottawa, State of Ohio, during fiscal year ending on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance six dash twenty-two?
Madam President?
As Mrs. Bealman.
I move to amend ordinance six dash twenty-two to provide for the following changes only. Police Department, other, and, and, let me preface this by saying, Counsel, you have this in front of you, all of these amounts? Because I'm losing my voice. Police Department, other, four hundred forty-five, forty hundred forty-five thousand fifteen dollars. Police Department total, two million seven hundred three thousand six hundred fifteen dollars. Senior Center, total sixty-eight hundred. Recreation Department, other, ninety-five thousand two hundred. Recreation Department total, ninety-five thousand two hundred. Parking lot total, three thousand. City Hall total, fifty-four thousand eight hundred. City Council, other, five thousand. City Council total, forty-four thousand six hundred and fifty. Mayor, other, seven thousand. Mayor total, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred. Administrative Personnel Services, two hundred nine thousand nine hundred. Administrative, other, six hundred fifty-nine thousand. Administrative total, eight hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred. Safety Service, other, nineteen thousand. Safety Service total, one hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred, I don't know if that will help. Cemetery Personal Services, three hundred sixty-eight thousand eight hundred. Cemetery Other, forty thousand two hundred. Cemetery Total, four hundred nine thousand. General Fund Total, four million seven hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred sixty-eight thousand. Fire Levy, Other, two hundred twenty-one thousand. Fire Levy Total, one million three hundred seventy-five thousand. Municipal Purposes Total, four hundred seventy-two thousand four hundred. Street M and R, Other, three hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred. Street M and R Total, six hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred. Harbor Patrol Other, thirteen thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Harbor Patrol Total, thirty-four thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars. Water Personal Services, seven hundred thirty-eight thousand one hundred. Water Other, one million five hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred. Water Total, two million four hundred fourteen thousand three hundred. Sewer Personnel Services, eight hundred and two thousand seven hundred. Sewer Other, two million two hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred. Sewer Total, three million one hundred sixty-eight thousand one hundred. Fund Number, eight oh four six X Project. The total of all funds, eighteen million two hundred eleven thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-one cents. Net appropriation of fifteen million six hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars, six hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-one cents.
Thank you, do I have a second? I'll start.
Not reading it.
Yeah. And again, that was the handout that Mr. Bealman gave me with the red highlights, it was just summed up in that. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just had a couple more comments. It's unlikely that all of these totals will be expended, it's what's available to be expended, to allow for standard operations, expected expenditures, and any other contingencies we think are coming up. Administration in my office might come back to you, say, if we win a large grant, this city does. The mayor's talking about the state capital, but if that happens, this would need to be amended, and that would, again, come before Counsel. So that's kind of the back and forth, as the budget evolves, new things come up, new revenue or new expenditure, we'd ask Counsel to approve those, all in line within, you know, our means of what we anticipate proceeding with revenue this year. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Bealman? Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Bealman, seconded by Miss Gangle, to amend ordinance six dash twenty-two as stated by Mrs. Bealman. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Kelly Gangle?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Ordinance six dash twenty-two is to be amended. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance six dash twenty-two?
Madam President?
Yes, Miss?
I move to adopt ordinance six dash twenty-two.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hickman. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Bealman, seconded by Mrs. Hickman, to adopt ordinance six dash twenty-two as amended. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Kelly Gangle?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, with a vote of five to zero. Ordinance six dash twenty-two as amended is hereby adopted. We have no second readings, so we move on to first readings. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance seven dash twenty-two?
Ordinance seven dash twenty-two, and ordinance amending section seven-two-one-point-zero-three, seven-two-one-point-zero-four, seven-two-one-point-zero-six, seven-two-one-point-zero-seven, seven-two-one-point-one-two, and seven-two-one-point-one-three, of chapter seven-two-one of the Portland Codified Ordances regulating taxi cabs and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance seven dash twenty-two? Question? If you would, can I ask questions?
Yeah.
Sure. So, questions about the, this January first due date, so it just says, you know, by January first of each year, I guess, is there a renewal period, kind of similar to where, like the dog licenses do, where you have between December thirty-first and January first, or December first and January first, or like, can someone get their car inspected January second for January one of next year?
So, just to explain, byings were made, right now, we have different dates of April and May for different things, and it's confusing, so we put the January first date in there, so it runs from January first to December thirty-first, so the renewal timeframe would be prior to January first. So we would ask that, you know, the taxi cabs get their inspections prior to January first, have everything filled out, have their background checks completed, have everything done, so January first is in, and we can start that calendar year, because they need to get insurance, they need to do a lot, we don't want to have that lapse of time.
Sure. So it doesn't matter what point in the year they get it done, as long as it's done by January first?
Well, ideally, I think, you know, for their sake and the city's sake, you know, it would probably be sometime in the month of December, but there is no set open or closed date, it would be based on their services and based on when they, you know, renew, but at least it gives them one full calendar year to have everything, you know, in place for. We also moved to the yearly background checks, because prior to that, it wasn't, you know, certain when they had to do those, and we want to make sure that none of our drivers picked up any felonies or sex offenders, you know, sex offenses or any dangerous types of crimes, so that's why the police chief requests a background check annually. So, you know, I mean, I mean, I know what you're saying, like, you know, when are they going to, you know, pay it? So like, for example, our doc tacs is due June first. We'll get all payments right around June first. I mean, will they be penalized if it's January second? Probably not, but we just want to give them that, that date as the target date, and like for our doc tacs, we'll be receiving all of our payments probably between May fifteenth and probably June fifteenth. So it's one of those things. We gave them a target date and the penalties necessarily, but we just want to make sure that everything's in by the beginning of the year, so they can have the full calendar year.
And then for the background checks, what is that process? So in section seven-two-one-point-one-two, it talks about the chief of police, the director of forms provided by the chief of police to information. I guess, and then, but then it's up to the license holder to complete an annual criminal background check.
Right, so what it is, is the BCI annual, you know, the criminal background check, it's the same one that teachers need to complete if you're going for a new job, and they ask you to complete a background check, it's the same one. They perform them at the police department here, and also the sheriff's office.
So they would have to go to the police department?
Or to the sheriff's office.
And they have to pay fees, it's like so many fed dollars, they pay a fee, there's, you have to give them certain information, they run it through, it goes to BCI, then it comes back after. Okay. Which Bureau investigations is what BCI's?
Bureau of Criminal Investigation, and that's, it's the same test, it's the same background check for anyone in the state of Ohio who is, you know, asked to take one.
Like for employment, persons like that. And then in sections seven-two-one-point-zero-four, and seven-two-one-point-one-three, the director is referred to as he, his and him. Is there any, I guess, reason to make that not a gender neutral term? I guess we may not always have a direct.
It's always something like that, yeah, it's always something like that.
Even in criminal law, unfortunately. Sure, that's why I just Yeah, that's why. Because it's not referred like that in any other part of the ordinance, so I just
Yeah, I, you know, honestly, I don't think I can make a director, but I just basically used what we had previously, and then just made the changes.
So it's easy enough to change, to just, to set a he, just director.
It can be just director, you know, I think, like, Miss Starby said, it's in criminal law sections as, you know, he, they never use she, so they never use she, they never use he slash she. I don't know why, but it's
We can take that out of the equation and just use director.
We could use director, yeah, that's, I mean, that's not an issue, I don't really think it matters either way.
It's only like three spots, but
Yeah, we could use a director, I think a lot of times, while I want to say that probably this was written by a he prior to me, so, you know
Our female law director can say it.
Right, well, right, and it was probably written quite a long time ago, so that's, you know, probably back then, it hasn't exactly evolved, so, but yeah, we could, I could change as a director, it's a little deal.
I mean, well, we learned that, as you know, when we didn't know the gender, we, it was correct use he, and for he and she, and I think I've read that, even though you're talking singular, it is not acceptable to use they.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know about in law, but in normal discourse.
Yes.
Laws are so screwy, though.
And that is the one that's been assigned to Safety Services, and they will be discussing that this Friday. And that is the one that's been assigned to Safety Services, and they will be discussing that, um, this Friday, at their, at their meeting at four o'clock. Any other questions, Miss Collins? Does counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance seven dash twenty-two? Seeing none, we'll move to its second reading, um, on April twelve, twenty-twenty-two. Um, would the clerk please read by title and summary, ordinance eight dash twenty-two?
Ordinance number eight dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter five, four, nine of the Port Clinton Codified Ordances, regulating weapons and explosives and declaring an emerg- an emergency.
Thank you. And again, this was also assigned to Safety Services, and we'll be discussing it this Friday at their meeting. Does counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance eight dash twenty-two this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to its second reading on April twelve, twenty-twenty-two. Could the clerk please read by title and summary only? Resolution twenty-two dash three.
Resolution twenty-two dash three, a resolution supporting the country of Ukraine during Russia's unprovoked war against Ukraine.
Thank you, does counsel wish to take any action as to resolution twenty-two dash three? Seeing none, it will move to its second reading on April twelve, twenty-twenty-two. Move on to business from the floor, Mrs. Higman.
Um, nothing tonight, man, it's not, thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
Well, you know, I ought to mention Resolution twenty-two-three, even though we didn't just...
If you'd like to comment on it, you wanna...
I I I I like this, I like, everything about it was positive. I like the fact that Americans are standing up for people who aren't Americans, that's nice. Um, I'm hoping that this opens us a little bit more to be a little less self-centered as Americans. I, you know, I mean, Ukraine, what has happened is absolutely horrible, but it's only one of many that are going on right now, and, uh, I could probably name four of the countries, but they may not be quite as obvious as that, but similar things are happening, and hopefully, obviously, this is in our conscience right now, but hopefully, when this, it will open us up to seeing other things that are similar to this, and hopefully, we can be supportive as though populations as we are of that one. Or whatever that's worth.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I don't know how you're gonna write that down.
That's the clerks.
Sorry, senior.
I'm at four hundred.
Nothing for me. Okay, thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President, um, I really have too much to say, things are going along pretty well, things are cleaning up downtown, folks are getting out, and the flowers are starting to bloom. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mrs. Gillman?
I was going to recite a poem, I think I'll refrain, so, nothing's there, Madam President. Thank you. Scary one.
Okay. Would no further, um, business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I move this August body to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign, or adjourn, thank you.
I wouldn't believe it for me this long.